8:00 PM.
Okay, the time is now 6:58 PM and I call this legislative legislative session to order. Welcome to the September 9th, 2024 legislative session. At this time, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we invite Pastor Greg Carlson from Park Seventh-day Adventist for our city invocation. Good afternoon, Pastor Carlson.
Thank you, thank you. I thought maybe I was late. I don't want to be the late Greg Carlson. Thank you for the passionate discussion here tonight. I know several of you and I work in the homeless industry and it's greatly needed and the supply far outweighs the demand for affordable housing. Let's power heads. Father God, indeed prayer seems to be needed here tonight as there is a wide gamut of opinions and feelings towards how to get this project off the ground and moving. And Lord, we just pray that ultimately the beneficiaries would be those residents who need a roof over their head other than the bridge that we drive across. And so, Lord, tonight, as this meeting transitions into the official part of it, that your Spirit would be in the room and influence thoughts and decisions in a way that will benefit the community of Salisbury. We thank you for hearing this prayer in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you, Pastor Carlson. This time, we'll have a brief presentation by Sandy Pope with the Democracy Across the Disciplines. Good afternoon, Mr. Pope, and thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
Yes, right here.
Excuse me.
Thank you all for the time. Thank you for your service to the community. My name is Sandy Pope. Until three months ago, I was a resident of Salisbury for 10 years, now at Fruitland. I'm an Associate Professor of Education at Salisbury University and the Director of PACE Institute for Public Affairs and City Engagement. It's that last role why I'm here tonight. Many of you may know PACE as organizers of informative political events like candidate forums. Voter registration, education, and engagement are some of our key areas, but another is what we call Democracy Across the Disciplines. This is a weekly lecture series that explores an aspect of democracy or democratic life from a variety of viewpoints. To be very clear, when I say democracy and democratic life, I mean a form of government, not a political party. PACE is nonpartisan. I'm here to share with you all the topics that we have set for this fall, including one that started two minutes ago, and to invite the council to participate in the framing of future versions of the lecture series. The arc of this semester begins and ends with advocacy. This is because we view advocacy as one of the primary ways in which citizens can be active in a democratic society like the United States, Maryland, and the city of Salisbury. Between that beginning and end of the semester, we will examine three core ideas about democracy. Starting next week on September 16th, we spend four weeks reviewing the purposes and structures of democratic government. In case you don't remember 10th grade civics. During those weeks, we will also be thinking about where individuals outside of elected office can be involved. How do our citizens want to work with or through government to create the society that they want? The middle four weeks are spent learning about elections. This means how they are run, how we know that they are safe and secure, and how people or issues get onto a ballot. During these weeks, we'll be thinking about voting, but we'll also be considering the effort that goes into making voting possible and the ways that citizens might get involved in that effort, from serving as poll workers to simply becoming more informed. Our final four weeks focus on specific examples of local advocacy efforts. We hope these stories help to energize people to get or stay involved with the issues that matter to them, particularly through the political process. Stories from those weeks may not be the exact issue that some particular citizens care about, but we believe that these ideas broach lessons and topics that might resonate with them. All of this is based on the idea that these topics are relevant across the world. Democratic governance, free and fair elections, and the crucial importance of individual citizens within these processes are global issues. I would hope that everyone can attend any and all sessions that interest you. Like most PACE events, they're free and open to the public. But I also would like to formally invite the council and anyone watching to help craft next year's slate of topics. Because 2025 will be an off-year for most elections, we want to work with the very broad theme of issues. Makes sense that we would choose issues that actually matter to the people closest to us, and that's where I am seeking you all's help. I hope we might partner in selecting issues to examine and the ways that we might do that. The lecture series can be a place where groups of people learn and deliberate outside the pressures and confines of formal hearings. In fact, just last semester, we spent four weeks talking about housing. In hopes that that seems like something that might be useful, please consider this an open invitation. You can always reach me at pace@salisbury.edu. I'd like to thank you for your time and your continued service to our community. I really hope to see one of you or most of you at one of our sessions this fall. They start at 7:00 PM in Purdue Hall 156. It's every Monday night, 7:00 PM in Purdue Hall 156. I provided the slate of topics for inclusion with the agenda, and you can always find them on our website, salisbury.edu/pace.
Thank you, Mr. Pope. So I think, you know, we would like to either make this a, you know, I'll let you set the schedule of making us a part of the conversation for 2025, but I think we would love to be a part of a part of that. I mean, you know, getting young people involved and getting the conversation in our community with advocacy and, you know, democracy and the wonderful world that it is, as you can see. So you, you know, you let us know how you would like our involvement and then, you know, we'll, we'll kind of fit into that as well.
I will be in touch. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Pope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so on tonight's agenda, we have an award of bid by our procurement director. We have a declaration of surplus with field operations. We'll have resolution number 3365, followed by a few ordinances, 2884 for second reading, ordinance number 2885 for second reading, ordinance number 2886 for second reading, ordinance number 2887 for second reading, ordinance number 2889 for first reading, and ordinance 2890 for first reading. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt the legislative agenda.
So moved.
All those in favor of the legislative agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. This time, we'll invite procurement director Jennifer Miller, and I'll take a motion, entertain a motion to approve the award of bid for reading.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, good evening, council.
Good evening.
Two items on my agenda this evening. The first is an award of bid, the second is declaration of surplus. So for the award of bid, it is for invitation to bid number ITBA-25-108. It's a parking management system. This is for the Department of Field Operations. It will provide hardware, software, licenses, data plans, training, installation, and setup for what we'll call a scalable parking management system. This is under a cooperative contract from Sourcewell, contract number 080321-TSI. The vendor that was awarded is T2 Systems out of Indianapolis and Integrated Technical Systems from Wallingford, Connecticut. The contract maturity date on that is October 7th, 2025. The first year cost, we anticipate to be $103,424.91. That's the hardware, licenses, monthly subscriptions, and fees. And then for years two and three, the cost is estimated to be about $16,357 for recurring subscriptions and fees. There are per transaction fees that would be difficult to assume within those numbers, though. Please note that this purchasing authority is per the City of Salisbury Charter, section SC16-3, General Policy of Competitive Bidding Exceptions, which states that "Our competitive bidding for the city of Salisbury is not necessary or appropriate in the following circumstances." That's item A-9, "Contracts in which the city receives a contract price negotiated by the state, county, or other governmental entity pursuant to a valid contract." So as a service cooperative, Sourcewell is a local government unit, public corporation, and public agency pursuant to the Minnesota Constitution and Enabling Law, Minnesota Statute, Section 123A.21. The city of Salisbury has been a longtime participating agency, account number 2425.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. And I'm going to take a moment to pause and just pivot to Mr. Kitzrel. I know I asked you a few questions about this, this award of bid, and I just want to make sure that we just, you know, we got the answers to those questions with council, but I want to make sure that the public knows about this. So can you just bring this down to speed and explain to the public what this is with the parking management system? How this affects the current status? And then what this, what this did with our previous parking system that we had? So especially with the monetary portion of that. So if you want to take a moment, just to explain that, that would be great.
Sure. Let's go back a couple of years. For people who've been parking in downtown, they would have noticed a parking attendant who was doing daily transactions at the gate. We decided that we needed to move away from that a couple of years ago and moved to an automated gate system. We did have a failed implementation with our previous vendor. It did not work as sold to us. So after many months of working through that, we decided to split ways, part ways. There was funding still available from that initial RFP process, an award that came before this council. We were using the remaining balance of that fund to pay for this funding. We have done our due diligence over weeks and weeks of review of who we wanted to work with, and we were able to find a cooperative contract with T2. T2 is familiar to the area. They are the record agent for Salisbury University, so people are familiar. They have a reputable relationship here. How this is implemented over the next several weeks, I don't want to overpromise, underdeliver, but over the next several weeks, we'll be working with our procurement and parking team to make sure the contract is executed in a timely manner for our backend to come online. That would be a transition to a different software platform for permitting and then a slightly different enforcement within the parking garage. There is a whole marketing campaign that will accompany this in the coming days and weeks to make sure everybody knows what's happening, when it's happening, to make sure everybody feels comfortable with how this is executing. We did not get it right the first time when we transitioned, so we are making sure we get it right this second time. I do want to apologize to everybody who has had to deal with this over the last several months. It has been painstaking, but I think we have a solution now that is going to work and allow us to move forward comprehensively and set us up for the future and what we want to do as we look at other parking solutions moving forward. Any other questions specifically?
Counsel, any other questions? Good. Okay. All those in favor to approve the award of bid, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve the reading of these declaration of surplus.
So moved.
Oh, I'm sorry. Were we, was there one more award of bid?
Nope, you're good.
Okay, motion second. We're good, thank you.
Okay, very good. So this is per section SC16-8, "Sale or Other Disposition of Surplus, Obsolete or Unused Property of the Salisbury Charter." This is for various vehicles, equipment, and a mobile office trailer, 16 items in total. We would plan to dispose of these via public auction, but if not saleable, would be abandoned, destroyed, scrapped, or otherwise disposed of.
I have a question for you, Ms. Miller. So this is a rather personal one. I see one of the, you said auction, one of these vehicles, my grandfather would love to purchase at an auction. He has quite a few Ford Rangers, so where can I tell him to look for this Ford Ranger?
Absolutely. He can go on the City of Salisbury's procurement page. We have a nice big blue tile that will take him right to the link once we get everything posted.
And you don't cut him any discounts because it's grandson? So everyone heard that?
None.
Any other questions, council? No? All right, all those in favor of the declaration of surplus, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, the chair votes aye. Thank you, Ms. Miller.
Thank you.
Yes. All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve resolution number 3365.
So moved.
Second.
Counselwoman Blake?
I have, our city clerk is going to read that. You want to read the resolution first, please?
Bear with me, this is not part of my normal responsibilities.
Thank you.
Resolution number 3365. "A resolution of the Council of the City of Salisbury to confirm the Council Vice President has the authority to execute any and all closing documents on behalf of the city to convey the Mitchell Landing Apartment Complex from the City of Salisbury to the Wycomico County Housing Authority. Whereas, by resolution number 3141, the Mayor and Council of the City of Salisbury approved the land disposition agreement between the City of Salisbury and River Mitch LLC, which authorized the sale of the Mitchell Landing Apartment Complex to River Mitch LLC or its designee and authorized the mayor to execute the LDA on behalf of the city. And whereas, the Mitchell Landing Apartment Complex consists of real property identified as map 0106, parcel 1116, Maryland tax account number 09-056238, having a premises address of 135 Mitchell Road, Salisbury, Maryland 21801, and consisting of 2.68 acres, more or less. The property is improved by four two-story buildings, each of which contains six apartment units comprised of four three-bedroom units and two two-bedroom units, each an apartment, and collectively the apartments, and one one-story multipurpose building at which the management office, laundry room, and community center are located to serve the residents of the apartments. And whereas, the City and River Mitch LLC executed the LDA dated December 20th, 2021, and whereas, the City-County Housing Authority, the designee of River Mitch LLC, has demanded closing occur under the LDA. And whereas, the closing is scheduled to occur on September 11th, 2024, whereas, on or before closing, the city must execute an assumption and modification agreement, bill of sale, special warranty deed, owner's affidavit, and settlement statement referred to collectively as closing documents to effectuate the conveyance of the Mitchell Landing Apartment Complex from the city to the Wycomico County Housing Authority. And whereas, the council wishes to ensure that the city meets its contractual obligations in a timely fashion and through this resolution confirms that Council Vice President Angela Blake may execute the closing documents and any other documents necessary to consummate closing on behalf of the city to convey the Mitchell Landing Apartment Complex from the city to the Wycomico County Housing Authority. And now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Salisbury, Maryland as follows. Section 1, "Council confirms that Council Vice President Angela Blake is authorized to execute on behalf of the City of Salisbury the closing documents and any other documents necessary to consummate closing on behalf of the City of Salisbury with respect to the Mitchell Landing Apartment Complex."
All those in favor to approve resolution number 3365?
I have, I have a question. I have a concern. Okay, now this is only supposed to be done only if the mayor does not sign.
Correct.
That's all I want to know.
Correct.
Thank you. That's all I want to know. Go ahead, President.
All those in favor to approve resolution number 3365, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I will kill you, Randy, if you don't show up. Because I don't see a need for the resolution, but I will come find you.
Thank you.
We're both barrels.
Opposed?
That would be an opposed to needing a resolution, but Mitchell Landing better happen by the end of the week.
Okay. Hearing, hearing three ayes, one opposed, and my abstaining, the resolution is approved and does pass. I'll entertain a motion in a second to approve ordinance number 2884 for second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Moshe?
Ordinance number 2884. This is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with the Maryland Humanities for the purpose of accepting grant funds in the amount of $431.14 and to approve a budget amendment to the grant fund to appropriate these funds for the Maryland Folk Festival program. This is before you for second reading. There have been no changes or amendments since first reading.
All those in favor of ordinance number 2884, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, the chair votes aye. I'll entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2885 for second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number 2885, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the city's FY25 budget to accept and appropriate donated funds from the Community Foundation of the Eastern Shore Winter Wonderland of Lights Fund to support the cost of the annual holiday lighting displays at Salisbury City Park. This is also before you for second reading. There have been no changes or amendments.
All those in favor of ordinance number 2885, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And hearing none opposed, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2886 for second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number 2886, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury approving a budget amendment of the FY2025 general fund budget to appropriate funds to the Salisbury Fire Department. This is also again before you for second reading. No changes or amendments.
All those in favor of ordinance number 2886, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2887 for second reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number 2887, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury to accept funds received from Purdue Agribusiness LLC for the City of Salisbury Supplemental Environmental Project. Again, before you for second reading. No changes or amendments.
All those in favor of ordinance number 2887, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2889 for first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance number 2889, an ordinance of the City of Salisbury amending Chapter 1.08 of the Salisbury City Code entitled "Election Board" to adopt recommendations made by the City of Salisbury Election Board regarding the application for mail-in ballots and the canvassing of ballots. Whereas, the ongoing application, administration, and enforcement of the City of Salisbury Municipal Code demonstrates a need for its periodic review, evaluation, and amendment in order to comply with present community standards and values and promote the public safety, health, and welfare of the citizens of the city. Whereas, mayor and council of the city are authorized by Maryland Code, Local Government Article, Section 5-202, to amend, as amended, to adopt such ordinances not contrary to the Constitution of Maryland, the public general law, or public local law, as mayor and council deem necessary to assure the good government of the municipality, to preserve peace and order, to secure persons and property from damage and destruction, and to protect the health, comfort, and convenience of the citizens of the city. Whereas, mayor and council may amend the city code pursuant to the authority granted in SC2-15 of the city charter. And whereas, mayor and council find that amendments to Chapter 1.08 of the Salisbury City Code are desirable to update and clarify the code with respect to the application for mail-in ballots and the canvassing of ballots. And whereas, on August 8th, 2024, the City of Salisbury Election Board convened in public session to review potential amendments to Chapter 1.08 of the city code to offer advice and recommendations with respect to such amendments to mayor and council. And whereas, on August 29th, 2024, the mayor and council convened in public session to review potential amendments to Chapter 1.08 of the city code resulting from that advice and recommendations of the City of Salisbury Election Board. And whereas, mayor and council have determined that the amendments to Chapter 1.08 of the city code as set forth below shall be adopted as set forth herein. Chapter 1.08 of the city code is proposed to be amended by adding bolded and underlined language and deleting the straight-through language. And all this language is before you in the agenda. And what I'm going to do is highlight by line the changes that will be made. The first is the section 1.08, 020, which are the duties of the city board. And with the changes that are highlighted, that new section will read as follows. "The city board shall generally supervise the conduct of the system of appointment and registration, general and special elections, and petitions in accordance with the provisions of the city charter and code, and shall enforce the provisions of the city charter and code governing elections, qualifications for office, and campaign advertising and finance. The duties of the city board shall include, but are not limited to, A, observing polls, B, observing, observing, excuse me, opening of mail-in ballots, hearing contests concerning voting and the validity of any ballot, ensuring compliance with campaign advertising and finance as described in Chapter 1.12 of the code, and hearing complaints of alleged violations of the city charter and code governing elections, qualifications for office, and campaign advertising and finance." Section 2, Chapter 1.08, 220 of the city code, which is entitled "Application for Mail-In Ballots", will be amended by striking the language Tuesday preceding the election and replacing it with "The deadline set by current Maryland State law and regulation for mail-in ballots to be received by mail, fax, or internet." Section 3, Chapter 1.08, 280 of the city code entitled "Canvassing of Ballots" is amended as follows. If you look to line 80, changing the time for, from 4:00 PM to 10:00 AM, that change is also reflected in line 101, again, changing from 4:00 PM to 10:00 PM, as well as line 109, 10:00 AM, you're right. 4:00 PM to 10:00 AM as well. So just changing the time from 4:00 in the afternoon to 10:00 in the morning. And those are the changes.
All those in favor of ordinance number 2889, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hearing none opposed, the chair votes aye. I will entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 2890 for first reading.
So moved.
Second.
Ordinance 2890, this is an ordinance of the City of Salisbury amending Chapter 1.12 of the Salisbury City Code entitled "City Election, Campaign, Advertising, and Finance." Whereas, the ongoing application, administration, and enforcement of the city code demonstrates a need for its periodic review, evaluation, and amendment in order to comply with present community standards and values and promote the public safety, health, and welfare of the citizens of the city. And whereas, mayor and council of the city are authorized by Maryland Code, Local Government Article 5-202, to adopt such ordinances not contrary to the Constitution of Maryland, public general law, or public local law, as the mayor and council deem necessary to assure the good government of the municipality, to preserve peace and order, to secure persons and property from damage and destruction, and to protect the health, comfort, and convenience of the citizens of the city. And whereas, mayor and council may amend the city code pursuant to the authority granted in SC2-15 of the city charter. And whereas, mayor and council find that amendments to Chapter 1.12 of the city code are desirable to update and clarify the code with respect to the application of mail-in ballots and canvassing ballots. I think for the record, we need to update that. That is, it should be with respect to updating city election, campaign, advertising, and finance. And whereas, on August 8th, 2024, the City of Salisbury Election Board convened in public session to review potential amendments to Chapter 1.12 of the Salisbury City Code to offer advice and recommendations with respect to the amendments to the mayor and council. And whereas, on August 12th, 2024, mayor and council convened in public session to review potential amendments to Chapter 1.12 of the city code resulting from the advice and recommendations of the City of Salisbury Election Board. And whereas, mayor and council have determined that the amendments to Chapter 1.12 of the Salisbury City Code set forth below shall be adopted as set forth herein. Again, just like with the last ordinance, I will highlight the changes to the code, and they are before you again in your agenda packet. We are adding the bolded and underlined language and deleting the straight-through language. So directing your attention to the first change, which is reflected on line 72 through 75. This is the section 1.12.020, governing books, records, and receipts. Adding new subsection C, "All campaign funds must be deposited into one account opened with a financial institution, and such funds shall not be commingled with any other funds or accounts and shall not be used for any personal use, which is an obligation or expense of any person that would exist irrespective of the campaign of the candidate." Section 1.12.030, governing campaign contributions. Adding to Section A, "A campaign contribution may be a gift, money, loan that is forgiven, or anything of value given to influence an election by other supporting or defeating a candidate." And then changing the campaign contribution limit from $250 to $500. Striking the language of "and cash, or, and/or for any kind services of a commercial nature." Other changes are reflected in subsection C of that same section, line 94, striking the language "only that expressly so provides", and then increasing the amount of loans from $500 to $1,000. And I will read the last section, the last sentence, actually, last two sentences of C, so you can understand the full changes. "A loan shall not be forgiven in an amount in excess of $500. A loan to a candidate that is forgiven is considered a campaign contribution and is subject to the maximum contribution limit." Any loan that is... Any loan that is not forgiven shall be repaid by the deadline for filing the final campaign finance report as set forth in Section 1.12.040B. Adding new subsection 1.12.35 governing campaign transfers. That section will read, a transfer is a monetary contribution made by one political subcommittee, one political committee to another. A political committee shall not transfer more than $500 to another political committee per campaign. Changes to Section 1.12.040 governing campaign finance reports to be filed by the candidate or treasurer, increasing from seven to 21 days. Striking the language, a final disclosure statement referred to now as a final campaign finance report. And those changes are reflected on line 118 and 125. Striking subsection C, which is reflected 136 through 139. That whole subsection will be completely stricken. The next change is reflected on subsection 1.12.060, late filing of campaign finance reports, and adding the language, or when filing is not complete or accurate as required by Chapter 1.12.040. So regarding the late filing fee. And those are all of the changes to Chapter 1.12.
Thank you, Ms. Boucher. And just to go back, I know you made a correction, or you suggested a correction to line with the 25.
Yes, sir. We need to replace lines 20, to rework the whereas clause, lines 23 to 25, to make it applicable to Chapter 1.12.
So all those in favor of approving ordinance number 2890 with adjusting lines 23 to 25, making it applicable to Section 1.12, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. Thank you, Ms. Boucher.
Welcome.
At this time, we'll pivot to public comments. Do we?
Good evening, Lynn Bratton, City of Salisbury resident. I understand that we have passed the resolution, but I am looking at the actual resolution as I listen to it being read. And it says that the City of Salisbury has given Vice President blah 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 a closing document on behalf of the city convey Mitchell Landing apartment complex from the City of Salisbury to the Wycomico Housing Authority. And it, oh, thank you, it's easier to read from paper than the phone. And listening to that, I was concerned that I was, I as a private citizen here thought we were, it was going to Rivermuth, a subsidiary of Greens or a side group of Green Street Housing. And now it looks like it's going to the Wycomico Housing Authority. So I'm just raising that question and that awareness factor. And I'm sure it's all taken care of in the contract somewhere. But again, I would also like to just reiterate my other comment to Vice President Angela Blake, if I could have her attention for a second, that as she is taking on that responsibility, that as you look at the contracts and the commitment letters, that as a representative of our city citizens, should there be concerns or concerns that you see, that you go with due diligence as well into that fiduciary responsibility that you've been given tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
So first, I'd like to thank Councilwoman DeShiel and Council President Doty for coming to the Habitat for Humanity groundbreaking. We broke ground on two new homes in the Church Street neighborhood last Thursday, so we're super excited. And we started pouring the foundation on one of them today. So very excited about that opportunity. The other reason that I'm up here is to, in past meetings, there's been a lot of talk about density in the city area, the CBD, as it's called, and lots of discussions about parking. And I personally believe that increased density is important as long as we are considering the current and future needs of parking and that there's a logical plan put in place. The, my understanding is the Wycomico County Health Department is moving, and so that building will be vacant. I'm just a thought, I'm an idea person. Tear that one down, build a parking garage in there. There could be some other ideas. I just think that outside of a legislative session, there should be some meaningful thought as to how to make more housing happen and address the parking needs. And my last statement is that there are still dozens of boarded-up homes in the area. Some of those are owned by the Housing Authority, and they've been boarded up for over 10 years. That is unacceptable, and I would like some due diligence on the part of administration to find out what the plan is to get those homes either rehabbed or demolished. It's been long enough. If it were a habitat home boarded up for 10 years, I can bet you I would have heard about it. I would have had so many fines that I would have lost my job at this point. So it's unacceptable. Something needs to be done about these boarded-up homes. I am going to continue to talk about this until I see an action plan with a timeline. Thank you.
Thank you. Robert Taylor.
Back again, still a resident of Salisbury. I think Ms. Bratton has discovered what we might call a real kettle of fish here because the resolution clearly provides that the sale is going to be made to the Housing Authority. Now, the contract, the LDA, is with Rivermich. I've seen some other documents on the city's website indicating that they were going to partner, Rivermich, and that's Green Street Housing essentially, as Mr. Doty I'm sure knows, was going to partner with the Housing Authority. Here, the sale is going to be made to the Housing Authority. I don't know who the commitment letter is to. I don't really know. But I think gathering on what Mr., what's his name here, said, it was probably to Rivermich. So I mean, it looks to me like there's a whole lot of shaking going on here. And that's why I say sometimes closings get postponed because of what the documents say. And when you get a loan commitment and it doesn't jive with who you want to sell the property to, something's got to happen. Something's got to give, something's got to give, as the song goes. I want to re-congratulate Mayor Taylor after what was thrown at him by the man that was sitting there. He's vamoose now. And I want to just reflect on a little bit of the background on this. This is back in November of 2021. It's a memorandum from Julia Glanz, who was then the city administrator, to the procurement director. And it's talking about Green Street Housing's RFP that's resulted in this whole mess. And here's the comment in there. Green Street will work to make all necessary renovations within one year of closing on the property. Period. Now, this is back in 2021. A month later, the LDA was signed. That's the contract. They could have gone to closing any time after that. All they needed to do was to get the CDA, to give them the loan commitment letters. Now, you know, I've been involved in a lot of property deals. I see you're shaking your head. That could easily have been done. There has been no explanation given by your boss who sat there as to why it's taken them almost three years to get those loan commitments. It is beyond me why that happened. There may be a valid reason. Maybe the state didn't have the money to pay us out. There could be different things. But the city didn't cause that, and for sure, shooting. Mayor Taylor didn't cause it. So let's put the blame, if there is to go around, here where it deserves to be put. And I'll say again, Jake Day let this property go to pot. He didn't pay the loan. And let's face it, he set this situation up. And that's the law, as I said before, that is the long and short of it. Good night and good luck.
All right. Seeing no other public comments.
Yeah, no.
We'll transition to administration updates and comments from you two. And while you, you know, kind of addressed the comments, I do have one question that I hope it is addressed in there. I, we, we've been CC'd on a couple emails from, and again, I think we've touched on every project that we've touched on since coming into office, but Nick Simpson for Lot 10, there's been like, I think now like five emails that we've been CC'd on without any response. Just want to make sure that you didn't respond and didn't, you know, bring us in on the conversation or, you know, kind of, you know, if there's, I know that he's been, you know, consistently asking for, you know, questions answered or meeting, you know, yada, yada. I just want to know, is there anything that's going on that we didn't know about, or should we just, you know?
I just.
And I know usually, I know usually the public wants, you know, a response to emails, you know, so just, just want to, I just want to know if we should be responding or what should be going on with that. So, but I pivot to administration now.
An email came in while we've been sitting here at 6:30. Looks like a submission from Mr. Simpson regarding an updated Exhibit B with some formatting for us to review. I'm still looking for the $4 million for the approval, which had been the state commitment. So I think we just need to review that as an administration, and then we'll follow up with the developer and keep counsel abreast of any direction that we have. But haven't had a chance to really review the submission.
Yeah. Anything to add to that?
Yeah, I was going to say on that point. So we went through and got a independent analysis of the infrastructure costs over there, which I know you may or may not have been aware of, by outside DBF, Davis, Bono, Fidel, as well as our internal people. We took that bucket of expenses and we sent it over to him, because we tried to engage in a conversation. Then I reached out to Deirdre Bell, and so we're getting ready to come back to him with a firm list of where we are on that topic. And, you know, I've kind of, it's not like I've been on this topic, you know, 10 times with him, and we just can't seem to find a center. We had a conversation with Carl Anderson the other day about it, and so we're hoping we can get a compromise set in place. Now, is this general administrative comments? Is this closing comments? Okay. So last thing, are you going to say something? We were on that topic, you going to go something else?
No, I mean, I just want to make sure Sharon knows what's coming on. The next couple of work sessions, it's coming. We've got some things. But next week will be Horizon, and then in a couple weeks, we will be talking about some additional hearers home in Carroll Street. So I'll beat you to the punch. We're working through it. But go ahead, Ma, sorry.
Yeah, I just want to link a closing comment and get a chance to comment to Mr. Lee Field's comments. And, you know, he's obviously upset, but at the end of the day, what that was all about was for me, I was again, three or four months in the office before I became aware of the situation. But I couldn't understand why we would basically gift a property that even though they were assuming that loan, it wasn't a loan they need to be repaid. So technically, they got the property for free. Now, that's all said now. I was upset at the time. Since that time, I've not had a single conversation with him. I've not had a single conversation with him. So I don't know what he's saying. I could consistently try to put off, yeah, he was upset that I knew that I wasn't upset with the purchase price, but that was the extent of it. Up until this eight-day window, when I got notified of this settlement, was when the only thing came up with the issue of the commitment letter. And then I said, hey, I think we need a commitment letter. And there was a pushback there, which is when I got the independent review, which was with the approval of actually the Art Council. She said that I could get one. So I, at the end of the day, I, listen, I'm here to do one thing, and I think was represent, what the man said earlier, represent the constituents. You know, I'm not trying to postpone anything. I'm trying to get a great product for us as a city, get what's fair to us as a city. You know, those are monies, if we had sold that property where I think it's even half of what it's, I think, as-is value, we could have taken that money and rolled it into a loan program for elderly people like your program. And that's what I was trying to argue from the beginning. So at the end of the day, listen, I got no reason to hold up low-income housing. I got no reason to hold up any housing provided it's got, doesn't have negative externality for us. That's all I'm trying to do. So this whole virtue signaling of, oh, I love low-income housing more than you do, or you care less about homeless people, that's got nothing to do with it. I'm just trying to do it well, execute it well, and do it on the part of the citizens. Now, you know, you can, you can be morally superior to me after the meeting, but I'm just saying that's not my motivation.
At this time, we'll pivot to council comments. I will start with you, Councilwoman DeShiel.
Thank you, Andy Kistrow. I do beat a dead horse, don't I? I have a couple of comments. First of all, Pastor Carlson, who was here tonight, has the Seventh Day Adventist Church, where we have housed for the last, this will be our fourth year, the Hands and Hearts Ending Homelessness. And it will be open for the Cold Weather Shelter in November. Those of you that would like to volunteer and or supply food, a friend of mine and I have chaired the kitchen for the last three years and served 147 dinners and breakfasts and lunches, and with lots of donations from the public as well. But you can volunteer. So just go Hands and Hearts Ending Homelessness. The second thing is, thank you, Molly, for hosting us. It was really fun, and that's probably a really, you know, silly word, to see both these families, and they're going to be living side by side. They did the groundbreaking side by side, and it's just a really nice, nice environment in which, you know, they will be living and with all the support from Habitat. So thank you for that. The Rachel Manning with the city does her neighborhood walks, does it so well. And she also oversees the Newton Street Center for the children, and she had their back-to-school from 3:00 to 6:00 the other night, and had a lot of the, you know, local children there, and is trying really hard to reach out. It's similar, is, you know, the same services or same inviting and atmosphere over on Truitt Street. So good things are happening by the city for our children and neighborhoods. Okay, airport. I was attended the airport commission meeting today, and the good news is, is the AMT, the Aircraft Maintenance School, that the airport will be, you know, is going to be housing, will hopefully be open for spring semester. And David Ryan feels that it will be full, which would mean 25, and that's been 25 students, and that's in collaboration with UMES. So that's a really cool thing. And lastly, this weekend, Eastern Shore Mission of Mercy being held at the Civic Center. I had the honor of co-chairing it, basically, the community side, the last two times it was here. And this year, we need more volunteers. You can show up and volunteer. I am thrilled to announce that we have 100 vets and homeless. That's our total number that will do the soft run, which is we run them through first before the general public is admitted for free hygiene, care for fillings, and for extractions. And again, without beating something to death, over $1 million in services were provided when we did it in 2019. So come out and help us.
Thank you, Councilwoman DeShiel. Councilwoman Jackson?
I'm just about glad that this is over. Mitchell Landing, that project, that means a lot to me. Not just because it's in my district, but it needs to be utilized for what it's there for. I have friends that are living in there, and I know people, they're not my friends, but the thing about it is, they're paying rent to live in a place that looks like, I don't know what. Now, it's not where you live is how you live, but I mean, if you're living somewhere, you want a pathway look presentable. And I spoke to the mayor today in reference to no lights at all. They have absolutely no outside lighting at all. So when my girlfriend has to go home at night, which she normally doesn't, she gets home before, it gets too dark out there, I'll follow her home if it's too dark. And that's unnecessary. It shouldn't have to be that way. So I'm looking to see that the city does, even though we're going to sign a contract, let's fix this place, let's get these people in a safe environment, because that's not safe. And you know it's not safe when you've had people steal the air conditioning units and some more stuff over there. So let's get this place in order so people can be, can feel safe. I want to announce two events that will be going on, and this is in October, but I will continue to announce these events. And they're free events, well, one of them is free anyway. Anything we do for kids is free. And actually, it's for kids and family. It's going to be a trunk and treat, October 29, 2024, inside-out event. If weather is in climate, it will be totally inside, but this will be at the VFW 10159 on West Main Street, and it's from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. And there are numerous contests, hayrides, games, prizes, and treats. The kids will have fun. Last year, we had this, first time we ever had it in the VFW, it was 300 people in that VFW. VFW, and those kids and parents had a lovely time. And then we're also doing Adult Spooktacular Thursday, so the 31st, which is Halloween, we're going to do something for the adults as well. And that's from 7:00 to 12:00 p.m., and that's also at the VFW 10159. We're trying to do, create events for families and for the adults too. So we want to bring everybody together, but we want to bring them together on one level and then the adults on another level as well. And we want the parents to, and their guardians, to interact with their children, and that's what they did last year. And every time I've had one, they've always interacted with their kids, so we're looking forward to doing this again this year. And then in December, I do a senior citizens dinner and gift giveaway. It's all free to the senior citizens. Everything is free. All I'm looking for is donations of gifts and monetary gifts to help defray this, the cost, and it's usually at the Salvation Army, Richard Hazel Youth Center, and there we've had like 200 or 300 senior citizens. And what a joy to see them enjoy themselves. And, because Christmas time, a lot of seniors do not have anybody, and they're lonely. So we make sure that they're not lonely, at least that one day, they're not lonely and they receive gifts. And let me tell you, they receive televisions, all kinds of blankets, and, I mean, a lot of household goods and everything. So we just want to make sure that we continue to do this because our seniors are very important as well as our youth and our children. So those are some of the events, and that event will be December the 14th. So our deadline for taking any donations will be November the 30th. So if you have donations, if you'd like to contribute to it, my organization, Salisbury Advisory Council on Youth Activities, takes that charitable money. I have that organization, it's a nonprofit, and I would like to see people donate. Come out, enjoy yourself. If you're a senior sitting here, come out and enjoy yourself, because we have a list. You put your name on a list and just come out. And all reason why we have that list is so we'll know how much food to prepare. And believe me, we prepare a lot of food. I prepare a lot of food. I'm not going to say we, I do, but I love it. I love what I do, and I love what I do for my community, and I love what I do for the city, and thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Jackson. Councilwoman Gregory?
Yeah, I just want to put out another reminder that the Folk Fest still needs volunteers. I'm going to be volunteering Sunday from, I think it's 11:30 to 2:30 for the Bucket Brigade, so come on out, it's a good time. Please volunteer, it doesn't happen without the volunteers. We don't get to do big events like that without all the tireless work of volunteers. So please come out, consider volunteering. If you don't want to volunteer for the Bucket Brigade, I guess that's okay. You can volunteer in other ways too. But I'm going to put that plug out for the Bucket Brigade. On, next Tuesday, not tomorrow, but the following week, on the 17th, from 5:30 to 6:30 at the Riverwalk Games Park, there is a ribbon cutting and reception for the 2024 Salisbury Prize winner. It's a celebration of public art. There's going to be our poet laureate, Nancy Mitchell's going to be there. We're going to have artwork curated, artwork of, from women, women artists from the Eastern Shore displayed along the Riverwalk. So come on out, that would be, that's a great event. I also just want to touch on, you know, I really want to say I appreciate the advocacy of all the housing advocates that come out every week and keep pounding on the drum of affordable housing, and we need more housing of all kinds. As someone who's experienced housing insecurity, it's incredibly personal to me, and I just want to list off some statistics here on housing that we need to keep in mind as we're moving projects forward. People who are housing insecure are twice as likely to report poor health status than those who are not. People who are housing secure are, housing insecure are 2.3 times more likely to report 14 days or more of poor mental health. People who are newly homeless are more likely to have chronic diseases than the general population. Some studies have found up to 35% of newly homeless people had major depression. People who are housing insecure are more likely to have obesity, hypertension, diabetes, and cardiovascular disease. People who are cost-burden renters are more likely to have difficulty purchasing food. Homeowners who are behind on their mortgage payments are also more likely to have food insecurity. People experiencing homelessness are at a greater risk of exposure to violence, poor sanitation and infection, and cold indoor conditions and water leaks associated with mold growth can affect respiratory health. We have an epidemic of lack of housing in this country. It is not just us, it is everywhere, and we have got to get creative in how we tackle it, and we need to tackle it, because if we do not tackle it, we are going to have an absolute crisis on our hands in five years. This is absolutely important, and that's why moving this forward and having the security of that piece of paper was so important today. And I'm going to keep, I'm going to keep pounding this drum on how we need to get these projects done, because if we're wasting our time and spinning our wheels on projects that we have already gone through the due diligence and process of, how are we going to get new ones started? It's just, it's, we need to get this done. And that's it for me tonight.
Thank you, Councilwoman Gregory. Council Vice President?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Just first and foremost, this is, I missed the last session. Any of you know, I'd had a house fire, I guess, three Sundays ago, so it was pretty dramatic. It was pretty serious, pretty traumatizing too. But I do want to thank, I'm a little displaced too. My house is, there's a lot of loss, I lost a lot. It was in the kitchen, kitchen's totally gone, and lost a lot of other things through smoke. I didn't realize how smoke damage is, how serious that is, and water damage and all that, but I found out real quickly. But, so I found a short-term rental with me and my four puppies, which we're settling, because they got anxious too, as you can imagine, and we're settling and cuddling every night, and that's just wonderful that we're able to be together. Just, you know, thank you for your support. So many people have reached out and gave a lot of support and prayers, and that has been very, very helpful, and just continue to pray. I am really hoping to be back in my house maybe before Christmas. It's going to take that long to, you know, clean it out, repair it, and fix it up and this, that, and the other, so I didn't realize that part either. So you learn a lot. You learn a lot as you go. You never stop learning. So, and it's growing my patience, it's growing my patience, so I'm really working on that. And many people have already said so many things already, but so many good things go on. I just always like to remind people to donate blood. It's a gift to others, it's a blessing. If you are healthy enough, please donate blood. Also, you could donate your plasma and consider being an organ donor. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Vice President. Again, we are, I've said it time and time again, but we're thankful that you are here to tell the story. I know it's, you've been going through a lot, and we've all been giving you our thoughts and our prayers and concerns, and trying not to bother you with city business, but we appreciate you and so glad that you and all four of your puppies are okay. I think it's just a true testament that you always are a big supporter of the fire department, and, you know, you were able to see that they were able to come to your rescue, so but so thankful that we're celebrating you and not remembering you, so.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
That's right.
Moving forward, we will, there will be a couple of different, so just be on the lookout, like to, you know, provide warning as much as possible. There's going to be a couple of different ways we're going to change public comments. I just think, you know, one for you all and for us, and for our city clerk, it's a lot of disruption when folks have to get up and, you know, give the paper to the clerk and then get it back and forth, and it's a lot going on, and any slight distraction, you know, pivots my attention. So we're going to be changing the way how you all will be signing up for public comments, just to make it easier on all parties, and especially our clerk, because she's having to notate, but get the form from you all and then give it to myself or Council Vice President. So anything I can do to make the city clerk's life easier, I definitely look for, so. Yes, that's first thing. Second housekeeping thing, and I told Councilwoman Blake at the beginning, and she did pivot, but I've heard some of your concerns, and I'll just reiterate it here in public forum first before I let everyone else know, we're going to try, as us on this venue here, we're going to try to stay off of our personal devices during the meeting. I know it's hard, I keep in mind here, I try to look at it, but it is hard, but we owe it to you all to give you our full attention for these, however long it takes. So, you know, I'm going to definitely stress that, and, you know, if we're on our devices here, those are used for the meeting, but our personal devices, we're going to stay off of them to make sure we give you all our full attention so that questions and things aren't raised in the future. So I've heard your concerns from some of you who've reached out, and we will reiterate that moving forward for everyone sitting here at this table. And third, I love the, we're going to change it with the motions and seconds and everything, make sure that we're slowing that down, because we have some eager, eager beevers here, and it's.
Sniping. I sniped.
So we're going to change, we're going to just slow that down to make sure that you all, everyone has a chance to speak. I love hearing all your voices, so.
Sign up ahead of time.
Yes, so extremely proud of this council, again, for what you all did today. You know, when I took office, well, October, the end of October, but, you know, formerly as president, but we've been kind of discussing some of the same things, and I feel, I'm a very progress-driven person, and I felt like progress has not been made on some of these things, and so it is relieving for progress to be made on something that also is near to my heart. Again, you all saw that I had to recuse myself from that conversation for my relation, but again, affordable housing is my day-to-day life. It is my day job, and I see it, and I see how complicated it is. So of course, I want to be the one to answer the questions of why they're so complicated, but that's why we have experts who have sifted through, and that's why we pay experts, and we have consultants who do all that due diligence and attorneys and everything, so that when it gets to us, we can trust them that they've done their due diligence, it's gotten to our table, it is there. So I see it on both ends, on the government end and working end. And again, some municipalities, we just give it and it's go, and some, it's a little bit difficult, but in the end, it's relieving to know that folks will have safe, responsible, reasonable housing that they deserve, no matter their income, social background, anything like that. And so I see what, and I implored you want to drive by Mitchell Road and see what that property looks like now, and it will be a complete 180 and kept to that standard for years to come. And I'm extremely proud to be a part of an organization that does that day-to-day, and I'm proud of my city for now taking part in rectifying some of their past transgressions, and we didn't preserve it quite well. But moving forward, we are handing it to folks who will take care of that, and for residents to be able to feel that. So I am proud of that on both ends. I do want to go over a few things, and I know we touched on it with our charter, and just to kind of lay through things, because I do read our charter for fun sometimes, and I love it. Believe it or not, I take this role very seriously. I do. November 20, 2023 was a serious day for me, and when I took that oath of office for, when they said the following persons before entering upon the duties of their offices shall make oath before the clerk of the Circuit Court of Oconomical County that they will diligently and faithfully, without partiality, favor, or prejudice, well and truly perform the duties of their office. So for mayor and city council, I take that oath of office extremely serious. If you know me, you know I spend a lot of time with this role, researching, conversing. I take it very seriously. So this is what we have to go by, and so I implore everyone to read that charter, that guideline that says, and again, in Section 5-2, that all the powers of the city shall be exercised in the manner prescribed by this charter, or if the manner is not prescribed, then such manner as may be prescribed by an ordinance. And also, ordinances, the mayor shall see that all ordinances of the city are fully executed. So our charter sets forth the way how we govern you all. It's simple. Sometimes it needs to be interpreted, that's why we have attorneys, but that's our binding guideline here. And I always refer back to this charter of how I should run things, and I defer to legal. Just want to underscore that when we have questions, this right here, but I'll always go back to the oath of office of without partiality, favor, or prejudice. Last but not least, I want to thank the Transportation Department. We had some concerns over in District 2 with the newly installed four-way stop at church in Truitt Street, and we had some concerns there, even though a couple of press releases went out and things, but people are busy. People were shocked there was a four-way stop on the church street end. Luckily, I don't think we've had any casualties or anything that's happened, but I made a call after hearing some things. I called the transportation manager and the city administrator. I said, we got to make this right, we got to add some signage, we got to put light sirens, everything we can, and they acted. Within two days, a sign was put up, and they made sure that the lights were put up there. That's how we move things forward. We take the comments from our public, sift through us here on council, go forward, and things happen. I was so proud. I went by, looked at the sign and just stared at it, well, I kept moving, but I stared at it for a minute. But thank you all. Thank you, Andy, and your team, and of course, John Wilson, and anyone at Field Ops who made that happen. So that's what we need to do moving forward. So I was extremely proud to be a councilman, you know, that day. So that is all I have for today. The time is now 8:03, and this meeting is adjourned, and I will entertain a motion to convene in closed session to consult with council to obtain legal advice on a legal matter and to consult with staff, consultants, or other individuals about pending or potential litigation as authorized by State Government Article Section 3-305B, 7, and 8. The purpose of the meeting is to receive an update and legal advice on the PFAS lawsuit.
So moved?
Second.
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.